Mr. Hurd.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Drago's here. Ms. Washington?
Present.
Mr. Hoitzman?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Barhu?
Present.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. I think each of you received your appro-- uh, each of you received the minutes for June and July. Can we have a motion on the first? Because we'll take them separately.
I have a correction.
Oh.
On June, on page nine.
Yes.
Item number seven. The Board Action's motion was approved unanimously, unanimously, seven to two. Should be approved, seven to two.
Yeah, right.
I think seven to two is appropriate.
Yeah, that's...
That's correct, but unanimous isn't.
No, that's a good point. Okay, I'll take a motion then after that with that correction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. How about July 24th? Minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes? Okay. Move on to the new items, number four.
That's the residential plan unit development amendment, Grand Isle RPUD, and it's a time extension, DEV 2014-068.
Can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you. Dennis Mrazek, Planner with the City of Daytona Beach. This next item up is a request by Joe Hopkins of Performance Group on behalf of Shoreline Development, LLC, to extend the expiration date of the Grand Isle PD agreement by an additional three years or until May 17, 2017. We'll get this up and running here for you. Give you a location. The site location is over at Beet Street and Wilder Boulevard. And there you go. With an aerial for you there. You see, the property is undeveloped, vacant and undeveloped. The Grand Isle RPUD was originally rezoned to the RPUD in May of 2006. It's a 47-acre tract that was originally approved with an 18-lot, single-family subdivision. The original expiration date was May 17, 2008. There was a two-year extension approved in October of 2008 that extended it further to the PD further to May 17, 2010. There was an administrative extensions via some Senate bills that were approved that extended it additional four years through May 17, 2014. This particular request is for an addition of three years and would take the date of completion or when they need to start pulling their building permits to May 17, 2017. Staff does recommend approval of the extension requests for the Grand Isle RPUD extending the expiration date of the PD agreement by an additional three years or until May 17, 2017. An affirmative vote of six shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission, and the item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on October 1, 2014, and for second reading, October 15, 2014, which is a public hearing. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Anyone? Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joe Hopkins. I represent Shoreline Development and also the Performance Group in this request. I think Dennis covered the bases. The timing has been a bit critical for this project. The permits are in hand with the state and with the federal government, and we've been able to maintain those permits through the extensions that Dennis mentioned, through Senate bills. In the original PD agreement, we had a provision in there that this agreement could be extended for a period of five years. And as Dennis pointed out in his presentation, we took advantage of two years that were provided for in the agreement. There was actually three more years within the agreement that we never took advantage of. We rode the Senate bill approvals to extend it. So I'd appreciate your support for it. I think it's a great project. It's spent a lot of time and a lot of effort getting it to where it is today, and if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
I have a question. I like this project. Hopefully, when we get it done, I think it'll be beautiful. The extension expires May 17, 2014, correct? Has that affected any of your... Has that affected this, that this is passed?
Not at all. The permits with the state and with the federal government are independent of the city approval, and those are vested.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Would anybody like to speak against? Board?
Yeah, I've just got... We're not voting to approve it or to disapprove it, only to extend it for what's already been approved.
Right.
I make a motion, we approve. Residential Plan Unit Development Time Extension, DEV 2014-068.
Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay, thank you. It'll be recommendation for approval.
Should you have that a vote, Cobb? It's fine.
I'm voting yes.
No, we did?
No.
I'm just trying to keep up.
All right. If you have the next one?
Yes, sir. Okay. We have, excuse me, Land Development Code text amendment permitting electronic message center signs for places of assembly, DEV 2014-063.
Can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you. Again, Dennis Mrazek, Planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item is a request by Rob Merrill of Cobb Coal on behalf of Dr. Mark Howell, First Baptist Church of Daytona Beach Incorporated, to amend the Land Development Code, Article 18, Section 6, permitting electronic message center signs for places of assembly located on sites exceeding 100 acres located adjacent to interstate highways. Little background on the electronic message center signs. The original EMC ordinance was approved back in March of 2011. It did permit EMCs for certain locations, certain zoning districts, and for specific uses. It also provided for design, construction, location, and operational standards. And the proposed LDC amendment modifies the permitted locations for EMC signs. We've had several of these come through in the past, some EMC signs that have been approved, gone through the Planning Board and the City Commission. They include the Daytona Beach Kennel Club, Halifax Hospital, Embry-Riddle Main Campus, BCU Main Campus, which they have two of them now, the Daytona Auto Mall just recently, and most recently, Volusia Mall was just approved a couple of weeks ago by the City Commission. The text amendment, as far as what is being proposed by the applicant, does modify the language to allow EMCs for a specific location. Now, I'll read it for you. This is the existing language, is places of assembly with at least 1,000 total permanent or fixed seats and a minimum of 800 permanent or fixed seats within a single dedicated indoor assembly area. And this is how the text is being amended to add, or places of assembly located on sites exceeding 100 acres located adjacent to interstate highways. Staff is... Well, I should say, the use of electronic message center signage within the city is a policy matter ultimately decided by the City Commission after recommendation by the Planning Board. Staff supports the board's recommendation. An affirmative vote of six by the Planning Board shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there questions of staff?
I have one question. You're currently working on a sign ordinance...
Would you speak into the mic, please?
Currently working on the sign ordinance for I-95 right now. Are you not that you're going to bring before us?
For billboards?
For billboards?
For billboards. And this wouldn't be considered a billboard sign, so it wouldn't fall into those categories. This still falls under the EMC sign.
Yeah. Sure seems like it.
Seems like they're clustering.
Go ahead.
How many seats will this facility have that we have later on? Yeah, I see it's for the number of acres, but I wondered the assembly site.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 500 seats are what's being proposed in this, the next phase of the church. So it does fall less than what the code would currently permit, which is why the request is to allow it for places of assembly for areas that are over 100 acres, and specifically along the interstates.
So I always want to make sure I'm understanding. So this is for the 500 seat, and then it's also, we're going to be seeing the request that we have the ability to have notices for the other facility that's off-site?
Well, we can get to that, but there's been a change. So just if you can hold off to that next item, and we can talk about that a little bit more, but this just is addressing the LDC tax amendment.
I understand that, but there are changes that they are requesting in the next one. And if I understand this, if this is passed, then it wraps into the PMD, which then is another set of circumstances.
I'll give you a little spoiler alert.
Completely blow away the signage plan from the city that we...
A little spoiler alert is the off-site signs was going to be removed from the next item, and the applicant is not going to be taking that forward. So there are no off-site signs. No LDC waiver request with that next item will be associated with off-site signage.
So no multiple colors or anything like that?
No, that will be there, but again, that's something we can discuss with the next item.
What about the fact that we had the 1,000 seats in there for a purpose? We have a lot of churches in this city.
Well, I can let the applicant speak on that.
Point of procedure, Mr. Chairman, Rob Merrill for the record with Cobb Coal. Would you be... Would you object to Dennis giving you the next agenda item, too? These things are so intertwined that it's hard, as Pat was saying, to talk about one and not the other. And I don't want the tail wagging the dog here, so would you mind? I mean, I think it's probably a short presentation, then you'll understand it in totality.
Board, would you like...
I was going to do that.
Would you like to do that if it cuts down on the time that he will be talking to us?
I think that'd be a good idea. They're so intertwined that they have to be talked about at the same time, because we can't talk about one without the other. So I think it would be a good idea.
Well, they do, and I will be more than happy to do that for you. Just a reminder, though, that the text amendment will be citywide, so it'll be at any location that are over 100 acres adjacent to the interstate, not just the applicant's property, but any property adjacent to an interstate. So do keep that in mind.
And height, too, as far as that's... And we have made some exceptions on that.
Correct. And modifications would have to be presented in a plan development or in a comprehensive sign plan, which is what we see with the next item, so.
And there are a number of parcels that are currently 100 acres or more along I-95 that...
There are, yes.
Because we had asked that question before when we looked at how many would qualify and meet that criteria.
There is a lot of vacant property along I-95, especially to the west of I-95.
Right. All right, then you want to go ahead with the other one?
I'd be more than happy.
Is that all right with the board? Everybody okay with that?
We'll vote on each one.
Separate.
Yes, yeah. It'll be separate votes, but we'll just talk about them at one time.
Mr. Chair, before we move forward, I'd like to make a statement to the board. We are not talking into the microphones. We have people in the back of the room that cannot hear, and I've heard from residents in the city, when they're watching the program, they can't hear you at all. So we need to observe the reason for the microphones and speak into them, whether we like them or not.
Okay. That's probably a good idea.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Yes, can we hear from staff?
Okay, I will move on to...
Do you want me to read the agenda item?
Please.
No, I did not.
You just read the first?
I did.
Okay, that's cool.
Agenda item six, which is rezoning planned master development, DEV 2014-064, First Baptist Church of Daytona Beach, PMD.
Okay. Now, staff.
Thank you. Dennis Mrazek, Planner with the city. This next item is a request by Robert Merrill, Cobb Coal, on behalf of Dr. Mark Howell, First Baptist Church of Daytona Beach Incorporated, to rezone 138 plus or minus acres of property located west of Tamoka Farms Road, north of Interstate 4, and south of West ISB from planned commercial development, PCD, to planned master development, PMD, to allow for the phased development of a church and accessory uses, and to enter into a PMD agreement. The location of the church, you can see right over there, it is just north of I-4. We've got it blacked out, the area that is represented for the PCD. There you go, is the land use is church, and the current zoning is PCD, and you see the proposed zoning is PMD. Again, with planned master developments, they are unique districts intended for large areas. This one is a large area, 138 plus or minus acres. Planned master developments are intended for long-range development. The property was rezoned from the PCD back in 2004, and the applicant is requesting phase sequences in addition with the PMD. Give you a kind of a look at what's existing out there right now. This is an overview of the site. Phase one has already been completed as part of the PCD, and that included the entrance road, which you see over there I have highlighted, and the bridge also that was built to be able to support the area. The retention ponds, stormwater retention was also developed for the property as part of the phase one. As far as the PMD rezoning, again, here's the area. I'm going to go and superimpose the, what would be the second phase of the proposed development. Got circled right over here. This is the worship community center building that they're proposing, and I do have architectural elevations to show the board also. I should point out that with that particular application, with that particular location, one of their waiver requests from the Land Development Code was to permit unpaid off-street parking areas for temporary uses for churches. This is something we typically do anyway for churches, so we just wanted to make sure we had it included into the PD, and there was going to be no misunderstanding that an unpaid area can be used for this temporary type use for the church. As far as the architectural elevations, I do have a couple provided here for you, also included in your packages. See, they're very unique in the style, is what's being presented. But they do, based on the strict wording of the Land Development Code as far as design standards, they do not meet three different Land Development Code requirements. Now, the intent of the design standards when they originally were approved was to provide a very interesting and higher product, better product for the city. This particular building, although it does that, doesn't meet certain specific quantitative requirements of the Land Development Code. Those include the requirement to have all buildings less than 200 feet have a three-foot change of planes no less than every 30 feet, and that's the walls would need to be jutting in or jutting out. You see that the building is very unique, and it doesn't fall right into that category. Requires all walls and windows to make up 15% of the wall areas. You notice there are some wall areas that just don't have the windows, and there's a reason for that based on the needs of the applicant. Also, the requirement for all roofs and buildings less than 200 feet to have a three-foot projection recess ridge out of valley no less than every 50 feet. And it'll show a variance in the roof line. You take a look at the building that's being proposed, you see that they do have some varying roof lines. It's just they have linear areas that are greater than 30 feet, or, excuse me, greater than 50 feet that don't have those projections. But the building is very unique, and I believe it meets the intent of the Design Code or Land Development Code. Talk about signage a little bit. I've got the overlay of the property. Two signs are being proposed, two monument signs. The first one's located on Tamoka Farms Road, and the second one is the EMC, and that's located along Interstate I-4. There's a look at the one that is being proposed on Tamoka Farms Road. You see, it's seven feet high. It's got varying materials used in the makeup. And this is the sign that's being proposed on Interstate 4. This is the sign that would have an EMC, and this would be permitted if the following item, item number five, was approved by the City Commission. This sign is 40 feet tall. I do have the location of the EMC would be just in that location right there, and it's just a portion of the main monument sign. There are three waiver requests associated with this monument sign. First one, limits the... The Land Development Code limits EMC signs to eight feet maximum. This request is for 40 feet, which does exceed that eight-feet minimum. Taking into account the location on I-4, the height would appear to be appropriate for the location. The Land Development Code also limits EMC sign cabin area to 360 square feet. The whole cabinet area for the, not just the EMC, but the entire sign is 781 square feet, exceeding the code requirements. And then the third thing that the applicant is asking for a waiver on is the code prohibits graphics and background colors for EMCs. The request would allow background colors and graphics on this particular EMC. I did want to point out in your staff report, originally, the applicant was looking for off-site signage for the sign that they'd be able to promote church off that location into the location that they have in downtown, excuse me, in downtown Daytona Beach. After discussing that a little bit further, since the staff report has been completed, it has been decided to remove that request. We have never done an off-site sign before. We've never had a waiver request for an off-site sign before, so we spoke with the applicant, and they had removed that from the request. So that is no longer going forward. So as far as the recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning of the subject property for the planned commercial development to planned master development to allow for the phased development of the church and accessory uses, and to enter into a PD agreement. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on October 1 and for second reading on October 15, 2014. An affirmative vote of six is required to recommend approval by the City Commission.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Yes, you mentioned in the other about some summer signs that are adjacent to the interstate.
Yes.
One had Kennel Club. You know how tall that one is?
You know, the Kennel Club sign, I... Do you call offhand? I'd say the Kennel... Yeah, I'd say the Kennel Club sign is probably about 10 feet, but it isn't on the interstate. That's located on Williamson Boulevard. Other signs that are located on the interstate, we do have... We do permit interstate signage, and some of that signage can go as high as 85 feet because of its proximity to the interstate. So we do have signs that we permit that do exceed that, even the 40 feet for signage.
How about the one at the auto mall?
The auto mall, I would say, is probably...
52.
52 feet at the auto mall. Thank you. I've been told.
You mean square feet the signs are?
For the auto mall?
The auto mall?
Yeah. It's a big sign. I need to tell you that. Yeah.
By opening the barn door, so to speak, churches, which quite truthfully, part of this is designed to have some control in the city of Daytona Beach, originally was...
I'm sorry, go to your mic.
When the sign ordinance was made, of which Mr. Merrill set on that and helped make the rules for that sign ordinance, how does this open the door for other churches in the area to say, well, whoa, if all of a sudden, we see they can get an ECM sign, why can't we?
If they fall in, if they meet the categories of the...
And they just have to say, well, I'm adjacent or close to something. You know, everyone is specialized. Every one of these signs that come forward to us that are an exception is specialized, and it says, oh, no, it's just for this place. I have no qualms with this project, believe me. Just this one sign is of concern to me for our city.
Well, this sign does open it up for any property that would meet that criteria along the interstate. If there are churches that are located off the interstate that don't meet the criteria for the places of assembly...
But they would simply come back with another criteria.
Absolutely true. Anybody's entitled to submit an application to...
And if we don't at some point take a stand, we've just negated the sign ordinance.
I understand.
For this city. An example, in the church I attend is in Ormond Beach, and just this last month, we had a new sign, monument sign. The chair of that committee came, asked me, he says, we really would like to get an EMC so our secretary can change. It's a legitimate sign, just like our side code for a monument sign. I said, that's not going to happen. They've got the same ordinance we do, but here's who you go talk to, you know, in Ormond Beach. And they came back, and he says, boy. He said, they told me exactly what you said as far as the sign ordinance is concerned, and we can either, you know, do that with a new sign, or we can leave our old one up, or, you know...
Take an amendment to the City Commission.
Take it down, you know. But if you want one, this is what you get. And by the way, you also need to pay a business tax as a church, and you also have to have your sign inspected, whether it's a new one or your existing one. And said, we just happen to miss that. It's in our Land Development Code, and it's also a state deal. It says, we're slowly catching up with churches. So we had to do those two things, too. But just to go to show you, that city stands behind if an applicant comes forward. They say, these are the rules.
Well...
And he said, you don't even need to worry about trying to bring it forward.
Well, because they probably feel that it wouldn't go through. But the applicant is entitled to take it through to change the Land Development Code at their own expense. You mentioned fees. We do have fees associated with EMC, so when somebody does come in with an EMC, there are fees specifically associated for EMCs that they'll need to follow.
For churches, also?
For anybody with an EMC.
I'm talking about a business license there, which we have to... And I think it's state law, apparently, according to them. There is a state law.
Well, we'll have to look into that if we're not doing it.
Are there any other questions, staff? Anyone?
I have a question. The question that I have is, reading this, where it says adjacent to interstate, is there a specific definition within so many feet, so many inches, so many miles? What's the definition? Do we have a definition listed?
I believe our Land Development Code defines adjacent to as property that's touching the property. Or there may be also an example, I think with our new Land Development Code, where it talks about across the right of way also could be adjacent to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more?
Excuse me.
Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant?
I just wanted... I wanted to make sure that I understood the application, because we saw the architectural plans for what looked like a huge, I want to say, a big, big building with an abs and, you know, a nave and everything, and I didn't know. That's a whole nother phase. What we're talking about now is the building that you showed us, the architectural... Okay. I just want to make... I'm trying to get the total grasp. I will say, I am troubled about the sign, the size, the scope, and the fact that here we are talking about billboards and all of this, and I keep trying to picture the face we present to the public, to the passerby on I-95 and our other major thoroughfares, and the fact that it's so much larger, and the graphics, et cetera. But then I wanted to understand the project as a whole, so I guess that will come later.
And I probably should have explained in attachment A of your staff report, was the original PD agreement for this property, and that's what they're operating under right now. And you see the development that they have entitled into right now with that PD agreement. And so you can see what they're modifying off of, so.
So it's a much smaller...
At this point, at this phase, yes, it is. And it's a totally different design that they presented also.
That's what I... And now, and I have said before that I had concerns that we continually, not continue, we have frequently waived our design standards. I can understand that, but I just think we need to be cognizant. I know those were very hard fought. I wasn't a part of the board when those came through. But when you look at some of the design standards we've done, some major buildings, and once again, these are very visible, face to the community, and I'm not opposed to the project. I just am saying that to my fellow members, that we keep doing that, and we need to just be aware of that.
All right. Any other questions?
No, but just want to further comment on that. That's, you know, why they bring this up here, just like this is a 500-seat auditorium, you know? So it's not like it's a building that has to be designed to be a 500-seat auditorium. So that makes for, it can't have windows someplace, you know, where it's a sanctuary, and they have them spaced aesthetically, so I think that's what they had to work with.
Can this be expanded to anything as large as what was originally proposed?
Well, they do have the opportunity to come in for site plans. If they expand anything above 20,000 square feet, they're required to come in a site plan and to the Planning Board for approval. So anything that, you know, they'd have to follow their PD agreement and the Land Development Code for anything it is that they'd be proposing. So if it does go over 20,000 square feet, you will see it.
My concern just opens the door.
I have a question on the places of assembly. What qualifies as a place of assembly? I know it's in the LDC, and I've tried... I know it's in the LDC, and I've tried reading through most of it, and I don't remember that exactly. Speak of places of assembly.
We talked about that, and, and with the, the language that's being added, the, the first part that is already in the code talks about an indoor place of assembly, but when you start getting into just places of assembly where you're not quantifying indoor, particularly when you look at Webster or others, it could be just any area where you have a gathering, and it can be controlled. The, the new land development code, actually, the draft of that that we'll be discussing in September, has a different definition than we have in our land development code now, and it, and it even doesn't spell out about it being indoor, so I think that is an issue that you need to consider, to ma, to make it clear what you, what, what's being intended by the request for places of assembly.
Currently, it's defined as a place specifically and primarily designed to accommodate the assembly of persons attending athletic events, musical performance, dramatic or dance performances, speeches or ceremonies, and other similar events, including stadiums, coliseums, athletic centers, concert halls, amphitheaters, and arenas.
Woodstock.
Not quite, 500, not quite.
School cafeteria.
All right, any other questions of staff?
Hundred acres, class.
No, thank you very much, you can hear from the applicant, please.
Mr. Chair, Planning Board Members, Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridgewood. On behalf of First Baptist Church, I have here with me Pastor Mark Howell in the front row, as well as Chuck Dietrich, our architect for the project, and I've got a whole bunch of other people that are involved in the project, they're here to answer any que, any questions you might have. Let me start by kind of rewinding and telling you, in, in part, in answer to Pat's question about that big picture that you saw in there. About 10 years ago, the church came to me with that picture in mind and wanted to get a zoning approved for that project. That's what's approved on the books right now. What we're doing here today is essentially substituting the PMD zoning that we're requesting tonight for that previously approved PCD zoning. As part of that process, what we're doing is, we're taking that picture of that very defined giant church, you know, we call the spaceship church because it looks like a big spaceship, and we're coming forward with a much more generalized plan that has a phased approach to development of the church. And Chuck will tell you a little bit more about that program in some detail, so you understand some of the pictures that are after those first two pictures that you see in your package that I'm going to show you again in just a second. And essentially, what we're doing is, we're using a much more generalized future development plan, which you've seen these in many cases that I've brought to you in the last few years on, on projects this large, it's just hard to know what you're going to do 20 years from now. So what we do is, the first part of it will be much more definite, and then the subsequent phases will come back through with site plan approvals that you'll approve. So that's really kind of the, the difference in, in what's already on the books and what we're asking for tonight, so you understand the procedural significance. I'll talk a little bit about the sign stuff in a minute, and Larry, especially some of your questions. I want to point out at the beginning, I think it started to come out towards the end of the conversation, the code does in fact, and what, what you said, I was participating in it mostly with Pam Woods, and then ultimately, you guys in the commission, when we developed the, the, the code, did in fact include the churches as having EMC signs. And what happened here was, we weren't quite ready to build 1,000 seats yet, and so, but the property's 138 acres, it has, this, this part of the property has two-thirds of a mile on the interstate, and we have ultimately, I think, over a mile of frontage along the interstate, so it's gigantic. And although the five, the 500 seats is just a beginning, they still want to have that exposure on the interstate, so in, in answer to some of your questions, it is a very, very big project, and it's, it's the size of, or bigger than the auto mall, which has a much bigger sign on the interstate. So getting back to the project, I've got a slideshow I want to show you real quick, and actually Chuck is going to do part of this, and I'm going to do part of it, but I wanted to start by, I think we have one. Okay, go ahead and do the first slide for me. This is going to, okay, so I just hit forward on this. This is going to give you a little different perspective on the aerial, and I apologize putting my, I've got to put my back to one side or the other, and I'm right-handed, so I'm going to go this way to point to it. I've given you guys hard copies of this, which a lot of times, that's way easier to look at, but in order for me to point to it, it's a lot easier for me to go to the TV. Can you all see this one up here if I point to it? This is just gives you a little dim perspective on the property, and I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, when I talked about the frontage, the church actually owns property running all the way over this way to LPG, the extension of LPGA Boulevard. It's in the county, we couldn't annex into the city because it would have created an enclave, excuse me, of this piece of property here, that's a legal term that says, you can't, you, when you bring property to the city, you have to bring it in in chunks that are attached to each other, you can't leave islands of, of county out there, which, which it would have done if we'd have brought the entire property in. So we're only here talking about a part of their property today. They also, as, as Dennis mentioned, developed a bridge, a real nice wooden bridge across the Timoca River, that location right there, and an entrance, a nice entrance to the property along with the, the water features that you see on the aerial. This picture doesn't show it, but they actually own all the way up to ISB as well along the Timoca River, and this entire area that I'm showing, showing you right now, has already been dedicated to conservation easement to preserve that area of the river as part of the original approval of the project 10 years ago. So sort of the infrastructure, if you will, is in place, and simply, the buildings are, are going to come forward from this point. This is the first of the two pictures that, that Pat was talking about, I think, that are in your packet, that I call the spaceship church, actually, it's what Chuck actually labeled it. And, and this was, it was truly an elaborate project that was, that the church was ready to construct, and let me take you back 10 years ago, and you'll remember, there were developers knocking on the church's door here in downtown, wanting to redevelop that site with, you know, multi-use facilities with, with residential, we sure hope they would have, and the church was ready to move their entire facility out to the west side of town. And it was going to be done in, in phases, but there were very big, four very big phases, and ultimately, this is a million and something square feet of, of facility. It turns out, and here's another, another shot of it from I-4 looking back to, to the north, it turns out that wasn't what happened, and certainly, things have changed in the world, things have changed at the church. Pastor Mark can, can answer any questions you might have about those changes if you want to know, but this is a church that's, that's been in downtown Daytona Beach for over 100 years. I'm sure some of you are familiar with it, you have people who, who you know that go to the church, I think they have two, 2,000 or more parishioners and looking to grow, I think. So let me just kind of move a little faster, because I know part of my promise was I would not stay up here too long in order for you to put these two together. This is the, this is the new plan, this will, this will replace the previous PCD plan with a PMD, which again, is a much more generalized look at the zoning. The area that you see here in yellow is the, is the second phase of, of the project, the other areas in this peach color are, are future development phases, including recreational phases, and then future larger worship center. I'm going to let Chuck get up and talk about this first phase, that will be at some point in the relatively near future, coming through site plan review, you will see again, but with that, I'm going to, instead of, I'll, I'll hold questions if you could until Chuck's done, and then I'm going to get back up and say a few things about the sign. Thank you, Rob.
Would you remember to fill out a form when you finish, please, and put it up here?
I certainly will, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Charles Chuck Dietrich, I'm with Shanks Architects, we're located at 5151 Beltline Road in Dallas, Texas, and we are here representing the church, we're the architect for the continuation of development of the property, so real briefly, if I can get this, what we're involved with at this point is the overall planning and participating in putting together this PMD, but a significant part of that is establishing an architectural language for not just the first phase of development, building-wise on the property, which we're calling Phase Two, which is what you're seeing here in this, in this particular site plan, but also all future phases moving forward. So what we've done is, we've established an architectural language that we think is significantly attractive enough as a kind of a gateway project for the city as you drive down the interstate to be, be attractive, we're using a variety of materials, took a very close look at what's in the land development code as far as architectural standards, we've tried to maintain most of those, particularly when it comes to materials, but as noted, there were a few things that we were close on, but that we required waivers for, so that's why we requested that. So this is the overall site plan, it shows the two existing, let's see if I can get the laser pointer to work here.
Should it light, the laser is bright?
Let me go back to this one, okay. So what we're showing here is, this is the, this is the existing road here, these are the two existing flood control ponds or, or storm drainage ponds here, so those are all existing. This is the first phase of development, about 20,000 square feet, a little, little less than that actually right now, but by the time it's all designed and said and done, probably right around 20,000 square feet, an auditorium that, that holds 500 people, and then of course, the parking and utilities and stuff to serve that, that purpose on that property. This is what we're calling Phase Two of development. This gives you a little bit closer look of floor plan wise, this is the 500-seat auditorium here with support spaces, what we call back a house here. This is a commons area here in front that has all the support facilities, restrooms, a small catering area, that type of thing. And then over here is the preschool area here, that's basically to support the worship center for, for people that have younger kids, so that they have a, have a preschool area, nursery area, that type of thing, for when they have services and activities out These are the architectural renderings of, preliminary renderings that we have, I believe there's a little bit more description, good scripted things maybe in some of the packets that have some of the materials and stuff, but what we've tried to do is maintain the materials that are in the land development code and use a variety of different materials, glass, stone, plaster, or stucco, different roof lines, everything, trying to make it architecturally interesting and attractive. This is the, the architectural language we would expect to use throughout the entire project, as we develop future parts of this site, use the same materials, the same colors, and the same forms throughout future development. This is, once again, the front of the building from a little bit different area, this shows the children's area down here. Now, one of the kind of things that's kind of unique about this project is that the church came up with this concept of a church without walls, now obviously, this building has walls, but one of the things that we've been looking at doing is being able to open up some of those walls to the outside, particularly in the worship center, and I'll show you that here in just a second. So this is the backside of the building, this is the courtyard area here, this would be an outdoor baptistry here for doing baptisms on site, this is the children's area over here, and then this is the worship center over here. These large brown things here are actually garage doors, and that gives us the ability to open that room up to the outside and have literally a church without walls, so that they can have, on, obviously on days where the weather's nice, to have a, a nice presentation, be able to have a few people flow in and out during a, during a service or during activity out there. As part of this, as we're looking at the architectural design, moving forward past Phase Two, one of the ideas that came up was to integrate a outdoor amphitheater and a, a large water feature which would also double as a detention, retention pond on site. This is actually out along interstate, this is the amphitheater area here, big plaza area here for gathering. Now, this is not part of Phase Two, this is looking in the future beyond that. The sign that we've been talking about, this is the interstate here, this is the, the sign that we're discussing right here, that's the 40-foot tall sign. This is more of a ground level view, it gives you a little bit of an idea of the scale of the sign here, once again, that's the 40-foot sign that we had seen the elevation of earlier with the electric message center here in the center of it. Do they have any questions regarding the architectural design?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chuck. Let me just close by saying, I know that some questions were raised regarding the sign, again, I didn't want to tail wagging the dog, the sign is a very small part of this very big and important project, I think that's a very positive thing for the community, it allows the church to reach Westwood, if you will, and that's been part of their objective since 2005 when they first came in with the original project. So I'm hoping that you all will embrace the, the project in total. If you have some particular questions about the sign aspect of it, I know Larry, you did, I'm hoping that I can try to answer those. Again, the scale, I, I think you, unfortunately, the picture was not the, the best quality, especially on the screen, but if you'll look at the picture that's in your hard copies that we gave you, you'll see that from a scale standpoint, much like the auto mall sign we talked about, it's entirely in proportion, in my estimation, I think the staff said the same thing when, when Dennis was up here, so, I mean, there are places for, for different size signs, and this is, I think, appropriate where it is, if you think it's, it should be different, tell us about it, and I guess we can consider that, so. With that, I'll, I'll open up for questions for me or anyone else that's here with us, we've got Dwight Duran, our civil engineer as well, if you have any engineering questions.
Any questions?
I have one, I mean, I think when you say proportion, if you look at the auto mall and how many square feet there are, and how many acres there are, it's a whole different sight than this one is, and my biggest concern that I have, I love the project, I love the building, I love the design, I think they've really done something that would be good for our community, but having something open about place of assembly, you know, without any mention of what kind of building, what's in it, if you look at all the others that's related to the usage that's there, not just acreage, so acreage plus retail, acreage plus university, acreage plus hospital, so it's not just acreage, and that's the concern I have, is that the Woodstock Festival, there we have people assemble, it's over 100 acres, I'm going to now circumvent the billboard and put up a monument because I...
That's, those are all good points, and let me, let me start by saying, if you look at, are you looking at the, the language that has the underline? Look at the beginning, place of assembly is the first three words in that paragraph that are already there, it's already there. All we're doing is changing the size and the location as it relates to this particular project. Now, there may be other churches that have 100-plus acres on the interstate, but I'm not aware of them, they could buy it, somebody else might decide to buy it, but if they buy 100 acres on the, on the interstate, God bless them, let them put a sign up, in my, in my opinion. But, but let me say this, Ned, I'm happy to, to change places of assembly and what I'm adding to this, to churches, house of worship.
Well, what it says...
If you're concerned about Woodstock...
Places of assembly with 1,000 permanent seats, minimum of 800, it's saying there's actually something there.
Right.
So I'm seeing something besides just assembly. I mean, we have assembly on the beach every weekend.
Well, you know, the, the fact that you, that you have the permanent seating, it makes it, it was a church, I wrote this, I wrote it to be a church, and, and the fact that you could have a music hall that did the same thing, well, so be it, I don't think anybody was really thinking about that, but I understand, you know, when Kerry read the, the place of his assembly, it includes more than a church, I agree with you, and so to the extent that you want to include only a church, I'm happy to say that. I'm here today because this church wants to have exposure on I-4 for this magnificent facility on hundreds of acres, and I mean, literally more than a mile of frontage in their entire ownership, and so from a, from a standpoint of the, of the, you know, when you're related to the auto mall, no, I think proportionally, it's very equivalent, very equivalent, so if you want, if you, if you think that some different size sign or, or some different language makes sense, tell me about it, I think if it says house of worship, I'm okay with that.
Well, what I'm saying is, for this project, I don't have an issue with it, but we open the door for whatever qualifies as a place of assembly, and there's not a definition that I have that clearly describes, is it 500 seats, you know, what is it?
Yeah, I tell you what, I, sometimes when you write these things, the more you think about them, the more doubts are raised or, or you have to question the way it's written. I'm happy to scratch the whole thing and just put 500, 500 seats, as long as it's not permanent, these, this facility will have seats that can be moved around, but that, by definition, that's what it's intended to be able to do. The whole church without walls concept involves being able to move the seats and do something else in the middle of that, in that floor, right? So, so in other words, the, the, the thousand number in the permanent wording that I put in there a couple of years ago is what caused the problem for them. At the time, it didn't cause a problem because they had plans to build something that big... At the time, it didn't cause a problem because they had plans to build something that big. So, you know, if you want to rework it, I'm, I'm sure we can.
Yeah, my only concern is we don't like calling out a church or a place of worship because there's religious land use. We don't want them to think we're regulating them because they're a church, so we like grouping them in as places of assembly. So that would be my one caution. I don't really want to go the route of separating them out.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to change it to, from 1,000 to 500 and get rid of permanent, it does, it has the same effect. It'll allow this to happen. And frankly, it still is, is so big that I don't see it happening anywhere else, but, you know, it could. But the truth is, and you know Larry's, Larry's point earlier about, well, how much are we going to let, well, you know, we really don't have very many of these signs, and even with these very big parcels like the mall and the way we've custom tailored these things for very large properties, we're not going to have that many. Now, whether we have, he's debating whether we have six or 12, not, not six or 600.
Or even taking it down to 200. See, when you change the 500 seats, you've opened it, and the reason why the 1,000 seats was put in there, quite truthfully, as you know, we weren't limiting it to anyone, but when you put that factor in there, then it makes it a huge hurdle.
Yeah, I pulled the 1,000 out of the pie.
And it's almost to a point. There's no one on this panel that is against this project.
Right.
The problem is the signage and.
There's no rational basis for it.
Yes.
And the.
1,000 came from research of the existing churches that we had, existing places of assembly and the permanent seats, and we've got an inventory.
It was for a reason, a definite reason.
And how many churches were there?
There were about four or five that were 500 or above.
So it's not very many, that's my point. It is, it really isn't going to 500 or 200 or even 20.
Yeah, but if you change it to, to this one for 500, nothing keeps you from coming back in and saying.
Well, that's true.
250.
You know, but.
And it's next, you know, and it sits on 10 acres, and it's not going to affect anybody else. That's my problem. We open the door.
You just don't like me coming in and asking for more.
They need signage. I'm not against signage on there, but the type of signage, and certainly with opening up the door with the graphics and everything, no.
Well, you know, the, the whole question of, of what I'm asking for tonight is all we're here to talk about. Now, the question of whether I can come ask for something else another night, I don't think that we should, I don't think these folks should be burdened by the question of whether other people can ask for something else, Larry, because this is all we're asking for tonight.
That's true. And if we followed our code, it would not be allowed, period.
That's exactly right. Nor would this church be allowed. I'm here to ask you to approve it.
Only the sign.
You have to amend your zoning code to approve this church.
You can make any exception to this that you want. You can say, no, not the sign. I don't want to say that because I personally think they need signage there. It's the type of signage that you're asking for, and you're saying approve this, and we'll wrap it in the PMD, and then we can kind of do what we want.
But, but in all candor, what I'm asking you for tonight requires you to, to use your discretion and judgment and, and approve the church, not just the sign. The whole church requires your discretion.
We can approve the church and not approve the sign.
The church is not allowed by code.
But any other, any other person that would, you know, like when we're talking about what ifs, what if this comes back and what if this comes back, it still has to come here before the board. So if it was something like you're saying that would open the door for something inappropriate, we could recognize that it was inappropriate and say, no, and just vote no against it. It would have to come before this board. This, the size of the sign is appropriate for this site. The, this, I just think it's, you know, it, this issue is the one that we're voting on, and anything else, like I said, would have to come back before us. And if it's inappropriate, then we'd just say no. But in this instance, this is appropriate.
With the exceptions that's, that's listed in there, you agree with all those?
Hmm.
Were there other exceptions in there on the signage? You, you agree?
Let's hold it down.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment. Again, the project, I think is a wonderful project, certainly a beautiful design. My concern again is like Mr. Moore. If you lower the number of seating or permanent seats, you open the door or floodgate for other churches to come in, and I too pastor church, and there are other churches that are certain, have seat, limited seats. So I think lowering the 1,000 permanent seat or making it 500 or, it opens up the floodgate, and that's my concern also. My concern is about if you let one in, you have to be fair to everybody else. And then we look at what's best for our city. We talked about our codes, we talked about our standards, and I feel that this was put in for a particular purpose, and that's to keep certain things or certain appearance overall. So that would be my concern, is about not opening up the door for less than what's actually in the code.
So you're okay with the sign on, on this project?
The sign, just not the seating.
Right, okay.
Well, I mean, because of the location.
All we, all we want to prove tonight is this sign. And if there's a way to do it so that it doesn't open up any floodgates, now Rich mentioned that if we change it to 500, it's four or five churches instead of one.
There are no churches, all, there are no churches, they're places.
Right. Or places of assembly.
Can I ask a quick question? Excuse us for just a second.
Oh, of me privately?
Of you privately.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I know this is.
For clarification.
He's got a sidebar.
Okay, I, I, that, that really is not going to change the, the conversation we're having here right now. I think that what I'm hearing is you guys don't want to set precedent with this request that I'm bringing you. I appreciate that. To the extent that you can live with different language that, that doesn't set precedent, I'll ask you to, to do that. I prefer, I understand what Carrie said about houses of worship, but your code talks about houses of worship. It, it defines them, it, it regulates where they can and can't go. And in this case, I'm not telling you to tell a house of worship that they can't do something, which would deal with relupa. I'm telling you, I'm asking you to say they can do something. So I don't think that it's anything objectionable under the Religious Land Use Protection Act. I think that in fact, it's just the opposite, so it shouldn't cause any legal problems. If you were to change the 1,000 to 500 and get rid of permanent, I think you, you, the precedent that you'd set might be four or five other churches in the whole town. You know, it's, it's whether that, whether that is going to be offensive to you. It's not going to be, it's not going to be 20 or 30 or 50.
No, I, I certainly would be against that, without a doubt.
Okay, so there's one.
What about the, what about the sign, 40 feet, and what you asked for, the size and the cabinet? Eliminate item number three, the graphics, follow LDC procedure, and we allow the 40-foot sign with the EMC that follows our land code.
I tell you what, I'd like, if you guys, if you guys wouldn't mind breaking that out as a separate consideration, if, if you guys have a majority of, that don't want EMC on this sign, I think that the ability for a church to put out several messages is a positive thing. It's my, it's my thing.
Well, I, I said an EMC.
Oh, okay, I thought you said get rid of EMC.
But now with the graphics, not with the multiple colors and the graphics, every church stands, I want to have one of those flashy signs too. I want to be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, Larry. I'm glad you said that because I, I don't think it was clear, Bob, let me just, because Larry raised a point that I think may have created some confusion earlier in the conversation I didn't clarify. When Dennis said graphics, he didn't, he wasn't clear. This is exactly the same thing as Bethune-Cookman sign, the Kennel Club sign, Embry-Riddle sign, where they can have some color and they can have some pictures, but they're static. Nothing's flashing, Larry. This is not moving graphics.
It said every six.
Yeah, remember we, when I came in here a few months ago and I showed you, this is what's allowed now, the text only with two colors. And I showed you several examples. This is for Bethune-Cookman. This is what it would look like if we could put a picture up there in different colors. And it looked 1,000 percent better, and you guys agreed. You said, oh, yeah, that does look better. Just don't let them move. I'm not talking about anything moving. It's the same as the ones you already thought was a good idea before. I just used, I figured you guys thought it was okay in those other cases, you'd think it'd be okay here. Frankly, I think that you're probably going to end up changing the code to say that. I just, I'm out ahead of the code.
And that may happen.
We can't wait for that.
That should be a separate issue and not be cited on a one bill to one basis.
News flash, how about places of assembly with permanent buildings capable of housing at least 500 seats slash people?
I would be very happy with that.
Okay.
Well, I would want to keep it at 1,000 or 800 because that's what we have in there. That would be.
I would too.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we want, if you want to go back to the interstate language, I mean, obviously, if you have less than 1,000, but you've got a plan for way more ultimately, and it's on the interstate, I'm just trying to get it for this piece of property. I think you guys know that. I'm not trying to get it for anything else. So to the extent that you can say that, in fact, if you want to say that as part of your motion, and I can take that to the city commission, we'll try to figure something out between now and then. If it can't be done, it can't be done.
I'd personally be very happy with that.
Places of assembly with permanent buildings capable of housing at least 500 seats or people. I mean, in fact, what you're doing is you're keeping Woodstock from being able to have a sign like that.
But what you are is opening it up for several more places.
Right.
Makes this job even easier.
He says, he says four or five.
At the time we adopted.
At the time we adopted the change.
Well, it also, if it's located on sites 100 acres or more.
Right, so which that, it makes it two or three. Even the bigger assembly halls are not on 100-plus acres, so it might just be one or two, or even one.
If I was going to make an exception to rather make it for this one property, period, with a sign, I'd have to change the code.
So you, so, I understand that you want to make the exception here and not do the text amendment. I'm just trying to make sure.
Well, the, the plan that they're bringing forward.
You know, I, I guess we, we could make, we could make this a much more specific provision. We tried to make it more general without making it open the floodgates, but if it were to, to talk about the interchange of, proximity interchange of I-4 and I-95 or something along those lines, then it's going to be extremely limiting.
There's a 50-foot barrier, is there not? Excuse me for interrupting. From the highway, the setback is 50 feet, isn't it, before the sign?
We're talking about the, the consecuity of the property to the interstate. That's what I was talking about. But my, but my point is, we could, we could make this much more of a custom fit to this property. If that's what you guys want, and, and that's, that's what, you know, you want to carry the city commission, Carrie and I can try to, I think, make that happen between now and then.
I'm, so I'm thinking with the language Dennis added, the first, in your, page two of your staff report, B1, the first part of it wouldn't change. So it would be places of assembly with at least 1,000 total permanent or fixed seats, semicolon, or places of assembly with, and what was that language, Rob?
With permanent buildings capable of housing at least 500 seats.
Located on sites exceeding 100 acres, located adjacent to interstate highways.
Yeah, so you keep all that in there, then it really becomes.
Would that work?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what you're there right now.
Well, no, that's, no, this is what I was adding.
We would further limit.
I mean, that's what you're adding.
Right, but she would.
Exactly what's being presented, is what you're saying.
Understood, Larry, but by adding this on top of it, it makes it even more difficult to, to get to. So, so Rich's four or five just turned into one.
Well, we.
At least one now.
Yeah, exactly. We haven't, we have no way to analyze along the interstate.
Just, it's a ballpark, you know, but.
Repeat that once again.
Let's do it in the motions.
Carrie, let me just give this.
Okay. So it would say electronic message center signs are permitted in the following zoning districts or for the following uses. Number one, places of assembly with at least 1,000 total permanent or fixed seats, that's what's currently there, semicolon. Or places of assembly that are, they, one, have permanent buildings capable of housing at least 500 seats or people, seats we'll probably go with. Two, it's on a site exceeding 100 acres, and three, it's located adjacent to interstate highways. So it would be, it'd have to meet all three of that, those criteria.
And the point of it, Larry, is the previous, the language that's already in there did not have to meet those latter two criteria. So we're adding two new criteria coupled with the reduction from 1,000 to 500, so it makes it even more difficult.
Can I, I'll make a motion. Oh, was somebody asking a question?
No, I have a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Have you finished with your?
I'm finished. I'm answering questions.
Now, is there any?
Oh.
Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. Does there anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Does anybody like to speak against? Sign it on the way back. Al?
Would you kind of dig 718 North Wild Olive? You know, I have philosophical differences, I guess, with planning changes. I'm a person that kind of thinks that we have standards for a reason and that all these convoluted exceptions to standards. I haven't yet heard one person describe what the public benefit would be of putting all of this into a PD of some sort. Nobody's even talked about that. We don't define public benefits very well, and we're willing to make exceptions for almost anyone that walks in the door, whether it's a church or a business, they know we have standards and they go, pfft. And I think it's a philosophical difference I have. I know that, I mean, precedents are important, just like with these EMCs. We started out this discussion and nobody wanted them, and we weren't going to have them. Little by little, they're getting eaten, the rules are getting eaten away. And it just doesn't work for me. I don't know who it works for. I don't know how people are so enamored of these EMCs. They're nothing but glorified billboards, in my opinion. I guess they bring in business, I don't know. It doesn't bring in my business. I tend to stay away from places that have bright lights and big billboards. Even the state doesn't have huge signs on exits. They have little signs. They don't have great big signs. It doesn't become, the roads don't become advertisements. And the first one, first item you discussed, the, just granting extensions, how many PUDs do we have extensions for in this city right now? 20? 25? Nobody demands.
Wait, I'm sorry. I'll go back.
I know, I just, okay. But it's just one more thing. It probably covers everything on this agenda. Thank you.
Well, I think you're making some good points, and I, it's certainly good for the board to keep those in mind, I believe.
I make a motion, we approve land development code text amendment permitting electronic message center signs for places of assembly, DEV 2014 dash 063, including what Ms. Carrie said.
Second.
All right. Well, a lot of pressure, huh?
Okay. And just for the record, that language might need to be tweaked a little bit as I look at it some more, but that would be the intent, would be the adding in the permanent buildings capable of at least 500 seats and tacking it on to 100 acres and the interstate highways.
Correct.
Now, would your motion be subject to tweak?
Yes.
To tweak? Okay.
We can tweak.
Want to make sure. I'm sorry? No, I got to get a second.
Mr. Harper, second.
I'm sorry?
Tim Davis.
Second.
Tim Davis. All right, I have a motion, second. Any discussion?
I just, I have a question for clarification. The text amendment is attached to the land development code. Is it essential that we do the text amendment in order to go forward with this particular project? I just want to make sure.
Yes, that identifies the place you can ask for them.
Okay, I just want, I want, so this is, I just want to make sure I understood the procedure. Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion, second.
Did I understand that? You say this has to pass before this can pass.
Yeah, the way our EMC standards were put in, you have to be allowed to have them and then the standards are a separate section. And so we identified sites that would be allowed to have them. They were all pretty much major type gathering places or the major type attraction places in town. And so it has to be on that one before you can get into the details of that sign. Which is the way all the other ones were done, when we made the amendment for the mall. Dog track was kind of a little last in the original one, but it was, it has to be in this first section.
It's even worse than I thought.
And, and another question of the, they have listed five, Dick, Kennel Club, Hospital, Embry-Riddle, BCU, and Auto Mall. All five of those have had waivers from the adopted EMC criteria. Am I correct? So they, we had set up the EMC criteria and then as soon as that criteria were adopted, each one had a waiver for the individual signs. Just want to make sure I understand the process.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, two?
Three. Three is three.
I understand on principle, I guess.
All right.
So what was it, five to three?
Yes.
Did it pass? Okay. Now, you want us to go ahead and, on number six, since we've already heard it, or?
No, I, no, I think we ought to go ahead on number six. You, actually, will there be any discussion on that?
I just want to make sure I'm clear, on, on number five, we had three no votes?
That's correct.
Six to three, not.
Three no votes. Barhu, Moore, and Dregga. For no. Did I get that correct?
It's correct.
Okay.
So we're ready for a motion on number six, or do we have to ask, I guess, audience participation?
Yeah, let me ask, let me ask the audience first now. Was there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of item six? Okay, now, is there anybody would like to speak against? All right, sounds like we're.
Make a motion, we approve rezoning plan master development, First Baptist Church of Daytona, PMD, development 2014-64.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Just a second, I want to make sure that includes the sign, it's not, doesn't separate out the sign, it's the whole package, am I correct?
It's as presented with the exception of off-site signs, they withdrew that request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Where were we? We had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on to number seven.
Second.
Agenda item number seven, preliminary plat, DEV 2014-090, Daytona Auto Mall four lots 13, 14, and 15.
I'm sorry, can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Dennis Mosek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. This is a request by Parker Minchenberg, PE, Parker Minchenberg and Associates, on behalf of Gary Yeoman's VP, Bonderson, Hardy, or excuse me, Hardy Nissan Incorporated, to approve a preliminary plat at Daytona Auto Mall four, located at 1050 North Tamoka Farms Road, to include lot 13, 14, and 15. The location of this, this is the south end of the Daytona Auto Mall. This is the last of the properties that are available in the Daytona Auto Mall for development. Little bit of a close-up there, it takes it from the existing developed site all the way down to the Dun extension. Regarding preliminary plats, this is a preliminary plat approval. The applicant has requested no waivers with this application. There will be a final plat. Final plats are required to go to the city commission for approval and they only go to the city commission for approval, so the planning board will not see the final plat. The preliminary plat includes the furniture road, which is along the eastern portion of the site. It also includes the infrastructure improvements associated with the development and they will be built to city standards. As far as a recommendation for the preliminary plat, staff does recommend approval. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission at the September 17th, 2014 city commission meeting. A majority vote of the planning board members present and voting are required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that concludes my presentation. And I do have two site plans that are associated with these plats that I'll be doing immediately following these, this item.
Any questions of staff? Okay, can we hear, can we hear from the applicant? Can we handle one of these that doesn't have waivers?
That's something we can handle, do you think?
I think we can do it.
Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, for the record, Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. Over the last 10 years or so, I've had the pleasure designing many dealerships out at the Auto Mall and this plat is what's left. So you'll be hearing the BMW and Nissan site plans next. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Does anyone like to speak against? I'll take a motion.
Move approval. Can I do that?
Second.
That was too short. I'd do it a little longer. Do you make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, number eight?
Number eight, agenda item number eight is site plan approval, DEV 2014-092, Auto Mall four BMW dealership.
Okay, can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Dennis Mosek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item is a request by Parker Minchenberg, PE, Parker Minchenberg and Associates, on behalf of Gary Yeoman's VP of Bonderson, Hardy, Nissan Incorporated, to approve a site plan for 33, approximately 33,000 square feet of a new building development at Auto Mall, Daytona Auto Mall four, located at 1050 North Tamoka Farms Road to allow development of a BMW dealership. And I should point out, site plans are required, over 20,000 square feet are required to come to the planning board for approval. The site location, this is the, kind of on the northern end of the preliminary plat that we were just looking at. Again, adjacent to Tamoka Farms Road, there's an aerial for you, just south of the developed property. Got the, the future land use and the zoning, zoning is, is again planned commercial development. Got a little aerial, this is just kind of showing you the location of where the, where this particular property would be going, the development. And I do have all of this also available for you in your staff report. This is the layout of the building, showing the, the parking, customer parking in the building itself. As far as some of the details associated, this is part of the 191-acre Auto Mall, PCD. This particular subject parcel is 12.4 acres. And it, again, there is a preliminary plat involved with this, which is necessary to provide a legal subdivision of the property. Project specifications and features, it is a 33,062 square feet, total square feet building, single-story, 332 parking spaces, and these are for the customer, employee, and inventory parking spaces. Got a color rendering for you, it meets the requirements of the land development code and the PCD agreement. And the recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the site plan for 33,062 square feet BMW dealership, associated improvements with the following condition. There were a couple of outstanding technical issues associated with this that the applicant is going to have to, have to address. And I did outline those in your staff report also, there's some utility questions and fire questions. The applicant's already made his application, I believe those have already been addressed. But prior to the issuance of the development order for the final site plan approval, all outstanding TRT technical requirements will be resolved to meet LDC standards. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required for approval. And again, this is the final action, does not go onto the city commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Okay, can we hear from applicant, please?
Again, for the record, Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. Just want to thank Dennis, I go to a lot of these meetings, he puts together great presentations for you guys. This parcel's located immediately south of the existing Mercedes dealership. The plat is going to establish an additional three acres for Mercedes, then there'll be a new BMW. The BMW dealership out there currently is going to be a Mini Cooper dealership when this is all done. So happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Does anyone like to speak against? Motion, please?
I make a motion, we approve item number eight, site plan approval, DEV 2014-092.
Second.
Wait now, is that subject to the conditions?
Subject to the conditions in the recommendation by Mr. Mosek.
Second.
Same with the second? Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion and a second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number nine, please.
Agenda item nine is a site plan approval, DEV 2014-093, Auto Mall four Nissan dealership.
Can we hear from, if we can hear from staff, please?
Thank you very much, Dennis Mosek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. Next item is the second site plan coming forward, it's a request by Parker Minchenberg, PE, Parker Minchenberg and Associates, on behalf of Gary Yeoman's VP, Bonderson, Hardy, Nissan Incorporated, to approve a site plan for approximately 58,000 square feet of new building development at the Daytona Auto Mall four, located at 950 North Tamoka Farms Road to allow the development of a Nissan dealership. And again, we'll give you the location, you'll see this goes right to the Dun extension, closing out the remainder of the Auto Mall PCD. Give them land use for you. And again, the zoning is PCD. Give you the location, you'll see it goes from the, the just recently approved BMW dealership to the, to the Nissan dealership and then all the way down to the Dun extension. I tried to provide you, it's a very large site, it's much larger than the other site plan that you had taken a look at, and I tried to put it up there for you, but we do have it in your package for you to take a look at. As far as site details for this particular application. Again, the project specifications, this is a 57,585 square feet building, a single-story, and it has 1,174 parking spaces. Again, customer, employee, and for inventory. Little bit larger than the last one that you'd taken a look at.
Well, that's for all the stuff.
There's the, the proposed elevations for you for the Nissan building. It does meet the land development code and the PCD requirements. And then for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the site plan for the 57,585 square foot Nissan dealership and associated improvements with the following condition. Again, same condition as before, the technical standards. Prior to issuance of a development order for the final site plan approval, all outstanding TRT technical requirements will be resolved to meet LDC standards. A majority of vote of the planning board members present and voting will be required for approval. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we've seen you earlier, have we not?
Yes, sir. Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue, here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Does anybody like to speak against? Motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve site plans, DV 2014-093, Auto Mall Nissan dealership with.
Subject to the conditions?
Conditions, yes. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Item number 10, rezoning residential planned unit development, RPUD, DEV 2014-082, Embry-Riddle Shunut, RPUD.
Can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you very much, Dennis Mosek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item is a request by Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, on behalf of Chris Hardisty, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, ERAU, to rezone 9.77 plus or minus acres of property located at 1601 Woodcrest Drive for multifamily, which is RA and R2A, to residential planned unit development, RPUD, to allow for the phased development of dormitory and fraternity uses and associated infrastructure improvements, and to enter into an RPUD agreement. Site location is, is not off of Interstate four. It is south of Bevel Road, it's approximately 500 feet west of Clyde Morris and it's across the street from the Publix Center out that way. Again, ignore the location, but there's an aerial for you. Future land use of the property is level two residential and there's also water on the property. The existing zoning is RA and R2A and the proposed zoning is RPUD. For this particular application, the Embry-Riddle Shunut RPUD rezoning, the current zoning again is RA and R2A. The site is currently developed, partially developed at least. There are 78 existing residential units on the site. The site plan was approved back in 1976, it's been around for a while. It's been used for student housing, as most recently by Embry-Riddle University. The applicant is proposing to add to the existing buildings that are out there. They're proposing three new buildings. There are going to be two, two-story buildings, 20-bed dormitories. They've also requested uses to include fraternity and sorority uses to be permitted on the site. I'm going to pull the site up for you, get you a little bit better idea of what we're looking at. The red area you see, that's the entire site, that's their property, goes out into the water. The, the existing development with the, with the 78 residential units is shown in the yellow. And primarily the area that's going to be developed with the additional properties are located there in the green. You'll notice there, it's fronting Bevel, it's toward the front of the property, not toward the back of the property where the existing development already exists. I'm going to overlay kind of what the plan is here for you, where the three buildings are going to be located. Two of them are located on Bevel and the third one is going to be located to the east of the site, to the vacant parcel and also adjacent to the existing water. We did provide architectural elevations for this particular request. Was designed by, for Embry-Riddle. I think you'll find that Embry-Riddle has come up with a lot of unique and interesting designs on their, on their properties. This is another one that they've come forward with. You see very interesting, interesting design standards. And again, while it meets the intent of our, our design standards in the land development code, it doesn't meet specifically all of the, the exact criteria that are associated with it. Some of the, the items that it doesn't meet, and they're going to be requesting waivers from the land development code to allow it. There is a requirement that all buildings less than 200 feet have a three-foot change of planes, no less than 30 feet. You see the, the buildings itself, they, they're very interesting. There are areas though where they do not have a change of planes. Also, there are requirements for all walls to have windows that make up 15% of the wall area with some of the dormitories and some of the uses. I think they've gotten down to 12%. It's not the full 15%, but it's 12%. They haven't met that requirement, so, so they do have to ask for that waiver. As far as a recommendation, staff is recommending approval to rezone the 9.77 acres of property located at 1601 Woodcrest Drive from multifamily RA and R2A to residential planned unit development. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for first reading on October 1st and for second reading on October 15th, which will be a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six will be required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that does conclude staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff?
No, this should have been a little different wording for Embry-Riddle to not be able to change planes.
Well, if anybody can change planes, it's Embry-Riddle.
Where is the entryway on that property? What's it coming off?
Sure, the.
Of a Woodcrest Drive.
It's all Woodcrest. They, the applicant hasn't made any modifications to the ingress, egress. It all occurs right here at this point.
That's kind of what I thought, but I couldn't tell.
Yeah. And there's, should point out, let me back this up a little bit. This section that's located right over here along Bevel Road, that's a, I think it's a 50-foot, 50-foot. And it's well-mature trees that are located over here. Anybody who drives over here, you'd be hard pressed to even see that there's any kind of a development over there. So that is a mature landscape offering place.
What will you do about that now? Are you going to do anything bad to that?
Yeah, the applicant is, they're going to be leaving that alone. That's, that's an area that's going to be protected, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from applicant, please.
Rob Merrill for the record with Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridgewood, on behalf of Embry-Riddle. I just wanted to add a couple of things. Dennis just added one of them, which is that there's a 50-foot tree area on the front of this property. So when you talk about the, the architectural waivers, I know you guys don't like waivers, so I wanted to say right up front. First of all, I think one of the things that you're finding is you have codes that have things in them that just don't work for every situation. So that's why you have variances, that's why you have PUDs, that's why you have waivers. It's not necessarily a bad thing. This is a great project. I mean, this is a project that was built in '76. And Dennis, can you, can you put the picture back up where you showed the, the part that hadn't, that was not developed? Yeah, that one right there. I just, what I want to show you is, back in '76, the site plan for this project contemplated another phase of development here. All the infrastructure, the roads, the water sewers, sidewalks, everything was put in place for those, for these buildings to be built back then, they just never got built. And so Riddle bought this property, it has student housing there now, and they just want to develop it with, you know, some nicer stuff, newer buildings with, as you saw, architecture from Bill Chapin, who's not here tonight. But Parker Minchenberg is our civil engineer and he can answer any questions or I can about the project. about the project. And with that, I think I'll sit down. I think we all know that student housing is something we need here, and this is, this is a part of student housing for Riddle that's not directly on campus, but it's very close. It's controlled by the university, you know, they, from a standpoint of security, et cetera. The university maintains the property, so. Any questions for us?
I don't think anyone's had any complaints with Embry-Riddle on their architecture on their new buildings.
Are there any other questions, the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Actually, now, does anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak against? I'll take a motion, gang.
Someone is coming.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
Yes.
Oh.
My name is Richard Tallalley. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am a taxpayer. I live at 105 Pinecone Court. My last name is T-A-L-L-A-L-E. Tall L, but Tallalley. In any event, we only have two exits in Pine Lake. The one where they want to build this contraption, and the other one on the Speedway at-
Clyde Morris or Bevel.
Right, well, anyway, there's the other one. Consequently, when you want to get out, you're going to meet cars coming and going. We can only turn right because the traffic at Clyde Morris is so heavy coming back and forth from the lights at Bevel and Clyde Morris, and then down there farther, it's just horrendous. You can't make a left turn unless you want to put your life in your hands. Right turn only. When you come out of where Emmerdale is, you can only make a right turn because it's one way. Okay?
Right.
Now, the problem we have with this is, we already have students living there, and we have youngsters and students or whatever, living in the three-story apartments across the way. That is across that drive where it meets Bevel. And you're coming and going on this exit, I don't know how many times I can tell you that they don't want to stop when they get to the street. There's no stop sign coming on to that drive where the Emmerdiles here and the apartments are over there. They like to just buzz out there, and if we don't watch it, you can get killed. As simple as that. I know this doesn't mean anything to you, consequently, because it's taxes. You're going to get a lot of taxes out of Emmerdale. When you build that property, there's going to be taxes. We understand it. We're paying a lot of taxes, and we only have two exits, and you're going to put more congestion in there. What's wrong with Emmerdale, which they have plenty of property on their campus? To build their dorms right there.
Take it easy.
I'm sorry. I'm hard of hearing, so I speak loudly. So, consequently, I can't see why they want to build it right there and make a congestion.
Okay.
I realize they had the property for years, they didn't do nothing with it. If they build these three-story dormitories, I'll guarantee you they'll be back here pretty soon, and they're going to ask you to tear down what they got there and build more three stories.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Rob?
Let me just clarify, the buildings are two stories, first of all, and we're adding three buildings. Already a dozen buildings there, and, you know, from a, from a transportation standpoint, number one, we evaluated the impacts, and they're de minimis. And they are going to, they will not create any problems where the gentleman was concerned about. I would also add that I know that Clyde Morris has already been engineered, or the design's already been done for six-lane, and I think that's coming relatively soon, too. So, and Mr. Minchenberg whispered in my ear that the multi-use trail that was built in the last couple of years between here and Emmerdale is going to provide for alternative ways of getting back and forth. And I think you all know, because, you know, you approved the planned master development for the campus, that the opportunity to do things like bicycles, skateboards, motorcycles, and alternative, and walking, believe it or not, are ways that were keeping people from getting in and out of cars and having to drive short distances. So, I'm hoping that that's something that will alleviate some of the gentleman's concerns.
Does anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Anybody like to speak against?
Just did.
Yes, yeah, I guess I kind of heard that, didn't I? Just continue motion, please.
Make a motion, rezoning residential planned unit development, ERAU, Shenute, RPUD, DEV2014-82.
Seconds. A motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Move on to number 11, please.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Residential, agenda item number 11 is residential planned unit development time extension. This is DEV2014-077, overlook, RPUD.
Here, staff, please.
Thank you. Dennis Mosek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next request is by James Morris, PA, on behalf of Daytona Seabreeze LLC and Seabreeze Daytona Marina LLC, to extend the completion dates within the overlook PD agreement for required park construction by one year or until November 30th, 2015, and to extend the completion date for the marina construction by three years or until November 20th, 2020. The location of the overlook RPUD is both sides there of the Seabreeze Boulevard and the parcel that's, that's located just north of the, the proposed park there underneath the bridge as the marina location. Give you the aerial, give you a little bit better look of that. Oops. There you go, okay. The overlook RPUD was originally approved by the City Commission in December 20th, excuse me, December of 2010. The amendment for the agreement was approved November 2012. During that amendment that was approved by the City Commission, a couple of things had occurred. There was the adding of the proposed marina site, and then there was also the requiring of the off-site park improvements. As far as the requested extensions, the requested extensions would allow the, the park construction completion date to be extended one year to November 20th, 2014, and you would extend the marina construction date an additional three years to November 20th, 2017. As for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the extension to the timetable for development to the existing residential planned unit development agreement for the overlook RPUD. An affirmative vote of six shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on October 1st, 2014, and for second reading on October 15th, 2014, and that will be a public hearing. That does conclude staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, page two of two, the two sentences just above recommendation, you're saying the request would extend the requirement for park completion by one year and the requirement for marina construction by three years. Wouldn't that be five years? You're going from 2015 to 2020? Or am I missing something?
The original agreement had it extended for five years from the original date that it was approved, which was in 2012, so that would have taken it to 2017. Is that correct? 2012, 2017, five years? So, taking it out to 2020 would give it an additional three years, and that would be the extension.
Are there any other questions of staff?
I have.
Yes?
The, you had two dates up there for the extension dates, and one was November 20th, 2014, and here it's 2015.
The original expiration date for the, for the park construction was required to be completed November 20th, 2014. They're asking for an extension for one year from that date to take it to 2015, November 20th.
Okay. Are there any other questions of staff? Thank you very much. Applicant, please.
Chairman and board members, good evening. I'm Jim Morris. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. My street address is 750 Oak Heights Court in Port Orange, Florida. I want to go to the basis for why we're asking for this. As you may know, the City Commission decision approving the PUD was challenged in court. And in July of this year, this summer, we got an order from the Circuit Court approving the City Commission decision. So, Florida law is a situation where, and you may have read about cases in South Florida where people had a comp plan challenge, they decided, well, we won one level, we'll just go ahead. They lost on the next level and wound up demolishing structures that they had built. So, in the way that Florida law works, it doesn't make any reasonable sense, I don't think, to start a project when it's under appeal. And so, the appeal took a considerable amount of time, and it was July of this year that the order was issued. The park construction is something that is a preamble to the marina construction. It has to be done first. And it's a park that's open to the public, it'll provide over 200 parking spaces, as well as a lot of improvements under the bridge that is open to the public. We're asking for the extension in order to give ourselves the opportunity to do the work that was anticipated when the development agreement was approved, but then was immediately, within 30 days after the final decision of the City Commission, placed in the Circuit Court. And when we finally got to the end of that matter this summer with the order from the court, we have at least an opportunity to move forward. I should point out to you, however, that the challenger that lost in the Circuit Court has filed a notice of appeal indicating that they intend to take this matter to the Fifth District Court of Appeal. The point of it is, regardless of whether someone likes or dislikes the project, and I'm not implying that this board does or doesn't, but I think the reason you'll hear objections is there's people that don't want the project to occur regardless. The fact is that it would make no plausible business sense to move forward when you're subject to a challenge. And the parties have been challenged, so the time has been consumed, not in building anything, but rather instead resolving the legal issues. And as I said, the Circuit Court found it in favor of the city and my client who intervened in the proceeding. So, the basis for asking for the time is we haven't been able to move forward. We need the time in order to be able to do that. The City Commission had concluded that this is a project they wanted to approve, and I think the planning board recommended it for approval as well. Sure, there was an outcry in regard to other issues, and those issues are still pending. They'll still have to be addressed. But we respectfully ask that you grant the extensions requested. Mr. Minchenberg is a project engineer on the marina, and I asked him whether or not he thought the timeline for marina construction was reasonable. His answer to me was yes, he's here, and certainly he can speak to you if you need for him to, but let me talk to you a little bit about marina permitting. When you're dealing with these properties, there is a repair and rights question the permitting agencies will address. There's also the regular Army Corps of Engineer permitting issues, as well as DEP permitting issues, or St. John's, depending, coming from the state of Florida. The Army Corps issues, just by the way the Army Corps does business, can consume an inordinate amount of time to resolve what might be a fairly simple issue. I see Ms. Vega smiling because she's been on the receiving end, I'm sure, along her professional career. So, we know that there's a lot of time consumed with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they are virtually impossible to speed up. I don't know of anybody that has successfully done it, with the exception of one church in this area did have some luck. So, we need the time in order to get it done, and the merits of the project aren't what's really here, but rather it's whether it's reasonable to allow the extension that we're requesting. And for that reason, we do ask that you support the request.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
Well, since we had an attorney addressing us, I was sure he's going to come forward asking for an 80-foot sign that glows in the dark or something like that.
Did you hear about that? No, sir, not tonight.
Are there any other questions, the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Was anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Would anybody like to speak against? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, planning board members. My name is Jane West. This is Jane West, Long Island, St. Augustine, 101 Allen's Avenue, Street A, St. Augustine.
Did you fill it out?
And clerk, shall I reply? I need some documents to read first.
And would you make sure you fill out a green form over there, please?
I will. I've just provided the clerk with some documents.
And would you please speak into the microphone? Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Shamrock, Shamrock Inc. Shamrock owns the parcel of land that is directly adjacent to the overlook property. And the upland also includes riparian rights that extend out into the Halifax River. The proposed marina here, and I'm not going to go into the substance because this is basically already been decided by your predecessors, the planning board back in 2012. I know that, I'm aware of that. But what I am also aware of is that two wrongs don't make a right. So, your decision tonight could possibly ratify and confirm that Aaronus decision back in 2012 that has been subject to ongoing protracted, very expensive litigation for all the parties here, as Mr. Jim Morris alluded to. Now, any extension of deadlines here is going to confirm that initial flawed analysis that was based on a lack of information, a lack of data, and inaccurate legal opinions. I'm going to walk you through some of the exhibits that we have. Exhibit A, this is the document that you are seeking to extend. This is the First Amendment to the overlook RPUD. And if you take a look, on page, what it's marked is page seven in bold, under Section 12, effective date, there's a completion schedule. Has everyone found the page?
Page seven.
Page seven, Section 12, effective date, completion schedule. Subsection C provides that one 12-month extension of the scheduled application or completion dates may be permitted as a minor modification to this agreement. Now, members of this board, I would encourage you to abide by the terms of the agreement that you, your predecessors, this planning board, the city, has agreed to with this developer, Richard Zahn, Seabreeze, and the marina. So, I would really encourage us to stick to that. Now, in terms of the construction of the park, that is not really an issue that my client has a concern with. His concern is with the infringement on his riparian rights. And if you take a look at the maps that I have provided to you, riparian rights, basically, they're the right of ingress and egress, boating, fishing, you name it. They attach only to upland property. If you take a look at the orange box, that is what the developer owns here. They went out and bought, from FDOT, eight acres of submerged land, basically an island of Halifax River bottom. That's it. There is no upland access associated with this parcel. And that is confirmed again and again and again throughout the record of this case, including by your own city attorney. If you take a look, at Exhibit E, on Monday, June 7th, 2010, Robert Jaeger acknowledged in a bullet point memo to Ms. Marie Hartman, Zahn has an unresolved legal issue with getting riparian access from FDOT submerged lands. This unresolved legal issue has not been resolved. That is why we are still in litigation today. So, this, what we're encouraging you to do today is to either put off making a decision on this particular request for an extension, the parties do have mediation, a global mediation that is set for September 30th, so postpone this decision to see if the parties can work this out in a reasonable and amicable way, or abide by the terms of your own development agreement with the developer, and deny the request for a three-year extension on the marina, or deny it altogether. In no way should the three-year extension be granted under the terms of your own agreement with the developer. There are other issues that pertain to traffic, but if you take a look at the material, the primary concern that we have here is with the riparian rights. And you can see the boundary lines of our client's property, they're marked in green on those maps, and they are completely infringed upon by- They're marked in green on those maps, and they are completely infringed upon by the access here. Yes?
I'm going to have to stop you from doing that because we're not really talking about that issue right now. What we're talking about now is extension.
Right.
And I don't want to argue that case again. That's already been here.
I understand, but as I pointed out, two wrongs don't make a right, and we are really hoping that you don't ratify an erroneous decision in the first place.
Okay.
Any other questions from Board members?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess somebody else would like to speak for?
Yes.
Or against?
Against.
Against.
John McGinnis, 625 North Halifax, which is also, that's the address of the Cobblestone condominium, of which I'm the president, so I speak on behalf of all of our residents. I just wanted to say, I know the issue before you tonight, I almost said us, before you tonight is just the time extensions. However, I think, just to go on the record, the objections that the neighborhood and the condominium had, a whole variety of quality of life issues, loss of view, our repairian rights being lost, noise from a proposed Marina, pollution by the disturbance of the debris field, which is the eight acres, and possible marine life impact. So those were the concerns. The other issue that I had was during the course of our public discussions on this board in 2010 and 2012, and in the variety of meetings that we had where this item was brought forward, there were a couple of policy program items that never got discussed. And one of the items that never got discussed was the ability to combine parcels into a PUD. And one of the, and that was the, in 2012, when we combined the eight underwater acres with the other two parcels that comprised the Diplomat, they were all comprised into one PUD unit. And although PUDs that are separated by a vehicle right of way, a street, we had never done one before, and it was never discussed, a PUD where one of the parcels was separated by a body of water, in this case, the Florida navigable water. We had never, and that was, that item was never discussed. So that's why I think that's an item that we probably should have discussed. Because this, the parcel and the river, the eight acres, is not even within the repairian lines of the overlooked property. But that brings me to another point which was never discussed. The maps that were submitted in 2010 and 2012, there was some discrepancy between some of the boundary lines in those maps. And, but that, again, was another issue that was not discussed. There was also no discussion of the actual rezoning of the eight underwater acres, because, as we know, underwater land is not zoned. And it seems to me that we would have had to have a discussion whether or not we needed a zoning of those acres, even a change in the comp plan or the future land use plan, even to consider combining those underwater acres with the acres that are on the land. I can't call them upland acres because I do not believe there's any upland piece of this. Anyway, so my concern with this, the, there's a variety of ways that you, the extensions can happen. There can be amendments, there can be major extensions, there can be minor extensions, minor modifications. But considering that the board and the City Commission has not discussed some of these basic items, I would just encourage you to consider clarifying some of these land development code zoning-type questions before you grant any extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against? Yes?
Board, I'll be brief, and I'll just try to respond to the comments that you've heard. First, a great deal, if not almost all, of what Ms. West discussed was a part of the Circuit Court matter that's been in court for two years. Briefs in that document were, with exhibits, probably 1,000 pages plus. The Circuit Court evaluated that. That isn't the issue before you this evening. From a standpoint of repairian lines, there is repairian contact between my client's property, and my client actually owns the submerged land that's referred to. Here's the irony, I think, because the argument made by the people in objection is they would effectively say, hurry up, make it happen now, do what we object to. And their effort has been, one way or another, to delay this and try, basically, to starve the project out. The Planning Board and the City Commission approved this, and much of what Mr. McGinnis just said, I absolutely and completely disagree with in regard to whether the issues were discussed or considered. They've been discussed and considered at the Planning Board, at the City Commission, and in the Circuit Court. I would point out also that neither Mr. McGinnis or any of his neighbors took intervention in that action if they thought the matter warranted further discussion. There is a final decision on that, subject to appeal to the Fifth District Court of Appeal. We have consumed time in litigation and not in production. And I was listening a little earlier to some of the comments in regard to the objectives of this community to try and redevelop and become a better community, and maybe, in a sense, recover some of the glory that we once had. Things like the one-way traffic on Seabreeze have hindered that area considerably. The repairian issue won't be resolved by the Planning Board or by the City Commission. It will be resolved by the permitting agencies outside the city. But as you can see, it is going to take time to resolve because of the posture of the parties that are in opposition. And from the standpoint of the global mediation Ms. West mentioned, there's actually a separate lawsuit altogether between the parties. I am not a part of that, neither is the case that I bring before you. We've got a resolution. And it's interesting to say, two wrongs don't make a right. The Circuit Court concluded it wasn't a wrong, it was a right, or certainly not a wrong and not an incorrect decision. We're asking simply for a reasonable time to move forward. And the number that Ms. West mentioned is something that is considered a minor modification that we simply go to the staff and request. The Planning Board doesn't even see it. So we're here, I published, I think, about 500 notice letters to adjoining property owners, as well as the newspaper advertisement that's required, seeking an extension so that we can go ahead and proceed reasonably to create public improvements for all the people in Daytona Beach, create a tax base, and try to create some redevelopment in the area. And I think Mr. Trackman was here earlier this evening, but he said he had to leave, and he had wanted to know, you know, that there are people on Seabreeze that are merchants that really support this kind of project. In order for this community to move forward, we have to change and do things to at least try and make it become more of what it once was prior to the changes that happened in the late '70s and into the early '80s. This is an extension, that's it, plain and simple. It's got staff support, City Commission is going to see it. I don't think it's reasonable to deny it. We're simply trying to get to the point that we can do something besides litigate issues over and over again with people that I don't think, under any circumstance, will agree to anything other than to further argument. Thank you, Board.
Any questions, any questions of Mr. Morris? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else like to speak against? Board?
I have a question, staff. The changes in the LDC on submerged land, would any of that apply to this situation?
Well, first off, that's not adopted. Second off, we're trying to provide some more definition and more clarity to that, but the draft that we've got now talks about any property that you own, you would have entitlements to what you own. That's the draft, as it's currently drafted.
I make a motion, we approve residential planned unit development agreement, overlook P.R.P.U.D., time extension, D.E.V., 2014-077.
Motion second, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our recommendations for, let's see, where are we?
Agenda item number 12. Agenda item number 12, let's see, I'm not sure.
Is that what you said? I'm not coming back.
This is, am I correct? Is it 11? Excuse me? No, I thought it was 12. Okay. All right. Okay. Rezoning residential planned unit development, Bex Homestead, D.E.V., 2014-032.
Good evening. Rose Askew, planning with the city of Daytona. This is a request by James Morris on behalf of John Dodge Investments, LLC, to rezone property located at 2514 and 2518 South Peninsula Drive and Tenny Drive, from R1A, single-family residential, to residential planned unit development, to accommodate two single-family principal residences with related accessory structures, and to enter into a planned development agreement. The original request was brought before the Planning Board on June 26. The applicant requested to continue the item to the July 24 meeting, but due to a lack of a quorum, we couldn't hear the item, so that's why we're here today. The original request combined four single-family lots. It had one principal structure, one accessory guest house, and an additional accessory structures. The applicant has since then revised the request so that all four lots will remain separate. The proposal to keep all four lots separated will cause the second proposed principal structure to cross two lot lines. It'll be on lots 26 and 27. It will also additionally, the additional accessory structures that were required will no longer be considered waivers because he has changed the proposal where the additional, where the accessory structures will meet the requirements for the Land Development Code. So he won't be asking for any waivers for accessory structures. The original required waivers that were in the original request, they're there, and they were in your staff report, with the proposed changes that he's made, it will only require one waiver, which would be from Article 9, Section 5.1, to allow two principal structures. So instead of having to ask for all of the waivers from Article 9, Section 5.1, he will now only need one waiver request. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the property located at 2514 and 2518 South Peninsula Drive and Tenny Drive, from single-family residential to residential planned redevelopment, to accommodate two single-family principal residences with related accessory structures, and to enter into a P.D. agreement. An affirmative vote of six shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on October 1, 2014, and for second reading on October 15, I'm sorry, October 15, 2014. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you very much. Pleasure having you here.
Good job.
I thought she was waiting for an applause there.
Board members, I'm Jim Morris for the applicant, 750 Oak Heights Court. And you already know, I was going to remind you, this is Ms. Askew's first case as a planner.
That's right.
And she's a pleasure to work with.
Yeah.
Let me dial this thing down for you a little bit because it's pretty straightforward. John Dodge Investments is a property ownership entity owned by Hank Bex. Marion Bex is his father, and they own the Flea Market, and you know the Bex family has been here a long time. What they have done is purchased four individual, single-family lots on the river. And the way that the codes are written, zoning codes are written, you're only allowed one principal structure, a residence, on a lot. What the Bex intend to do is have essentially a compound on four riverfront conforming residential lots. What they propose to do is to build two homes where they could build four. The north house will cover two of the riverfront lots. The south home, which is under construction, is located on the south riverfront lot. The third lot is a lot that, and y'all probably know this man, I only know what he liked. They've done this home from, in this property for many years, and just created a palm garden. It's amazing. And so the Bex are just preserving that area as sort of a common area. The southern home will be occupied by Hank's son, Mike, who's an adult, and Hank will occupy the northern home. So what we're dealing with, though, as inherent issue is one principal structure per lot. The lot at hand is comprised of four lots that would support four single-family homes, but the way the code is written is why we're going through the PUD. So from the perspective of what we're asking for, actually essentially cutting the density in half, building two very substantial homes, the property already has a variance where it was permitted to be walled in. Access will come from Peninsula Drive and from Tenny Drive. If those of you that know the Bex, you probably know they're some of the lowest-profile people you'll ever encounter. And there's been a lot of concern on their part to make sure their neighbors are comfortable with everything. And from the perspective of the homes, the homes will be built consistent with the R1A zoning codes. In many ways, they'll exceed them by a mile. And that's really what this is about. And Ms. Askew and I worked through the details of the anomaly in the code because of the way the code is written. And it's understandably written that way, so you don't have somebody with, you know, a 50-foot lot trying to build two homes on it. In this circumstance, we're defining the area as a much, much bigger area. I think it's almost four acres of property. And, you know, from the perspective of the neighbors, I think the primary benefit to the community at large is a couple of things. One, you have a 50% reduction in density by the proposal. You have an increase in the tax base. You have preservation of open space and vegetation, and there's many reasons why it's a real plus. I think, just as a footnote, when you look at families that have been in this community for a long time, that have had good success here, and they like this community, they're not moving away. They're actually building new homes in Daytona Beach where a lot of other folks perhaps have moved away. The France family has done that. The Bex family isn't in the same order as them, but they're certainly as much in love with this community as anybody else. And this is what Hank has wanted to do. His son has a son, so there's a grandson there, Marion III. They want to be just kind of in a common area, and that's the object of this.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, Jim, isn't there been a change that the staff report talks about, that the maximum size for the structure is 3,000 square feet?
Well, it's, that's in the P.D. agreement, which y'all don't have before you.
We're in the staff report, too.
Yeah, it's, it's a minimum of 3,000, not a maximum. It's, in other words, the homes are going to meet all the setbacks, but the minimums, established minimum is 3,000 square feet. There was a typo or mistake on my part, I wrote maximum, it should have been minimum. Yes. Thank you for pointing that out, Rich.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. Anybody in the audience?
Oh, I forgot the sign.
Oh.
We don't need a sign.
For the manatee.
They actually are very specific, only address signs, so it's in the sign.
And what size are those?
It has glowing numbers.
Does anybody like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak against? Actually, I can say that anybody who's going to have a home next to Hank Bex will really enjoy having them there, because he has, he had a big lot right across from my house on the South Peninsula, and it was absolutely spectacular. I mean, he kept it so beautifully. So I think anybody who has a house anywhere around there is going to be very impressed and really enjoy it. He's a good guy. Board, can I take a motion, please?
I'll move approval of rezoning residential planned unit development, Bex Homestead, D.E.V., 2014-032.
Second.
Motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay.
Any more members?
Thank you.
I think, now, Mr. Morris, I want to do for the record, it was Ms. Askew's presentation, not yours. That swayed my fellow.
I think we're at item number 13, and I'm sure it's a lucky's number for us. It is agenda item number four that's continued from a previous meeting, I believe, semi-public use permit, D.E.V., 2014-037, Daytona Playhouse.
Thank you very much. Your staff, please.
Thank you. Dennis Morris, I'm planning with the city of Daytona Beach. This is a request by Pete Zahn, P.E., Zahn Engineering Incorporated, on behalf of Daniel Kryle, President, Board of Directors, Daytona Playhouse, 100 Jessamine Boulevard, to approve a semi-public use permit. to approve a semi-public use permit to allow a place of assembly for a nonprofit community theater use, expanding the existing facility and including associated site improvements. Location of the site is one hundred Jessamine. It's, you see there, it's the end of the street, and it borders the Halifax River. An overview for you, see some of the multifamily that surrounds the property and especially to the north of it. The future land use is level-two residential, and the zoning of the property is R A. During the research of the property, the R A zoning doesn't actually permit this type of use, and, you know, this, I should point out that this is, this is used as, it's been around for quite a while. Purpose of a semi-public use permit, the semi-public use procedure is provided to allow an establishment and operation of uses by government agencies, non-profit entities, and similar uses who serve the needs of the publics, publics, excuse me. The proposed semi-public use is for the Daytona Playhouse. Again, this was, this playhouse was established in nineteen fifty-five as a community theater. The current zoning, the R A zoning, which is a multifamily, doesn't permit this particular type of use, but it is a legal non-conforming use. The applicant is looking to make some changes to the building, and in doing so, the semi-public use permit is the best vehicle for them to go out and do that, to be able to request some of the, some of the additions that they're looking to do. Just want to point out a few of those things that they're looking at. Here's an overview of the, of the playhouse. You see Jessamine is up on top, the Halifax River is over to the left. A couple of the improvements include, to the front of the building and to the rear of the building, they're going to make an expansion to the rear building and expand and reface the front of the building. This is a current picture of the existing building, if you were to go out there today. And here is a picture of what's being proposed. It's quite impressive what it is that they're proposing to do out there. Wanting people to take a special note of the sign that was also showing over there. This is a wall sign. One of the waiver requests is for the signage to be permitted for this particular type of use.
Are they going to flash the letter?
No. There'll be no flashing, no flashing permitted. As for the proposed waivers, request to permit projecting wall signage as shown in Attachment A in your staff reports, and that's the sign that we saw right there. There's also a request for a landscape buffer with a hedge in place of a six-foot fence requirement. The adjacent properties, there's some elevation changes. Talked to the neighbors, the fencing wasn't something that they were looking forward to. They would rather have a vegetative buffer, vegetative screening, and staff is comfortable with that. If, we'll work with a plan that's going to get us there to that vegetative screening. As far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the semi-public use permit. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission on September third, two thousand fourteen, at a public hearing. You know, it's not September third, it's actually going to be bumped back, unfortunately, it's because we, the item was here last month, and we had to continue it. Majority voted the planning board members in present. Present and voting are required to recommend approval. And I just wanted to thank Pete Zahn for coming in. He was first up last month to be here, and then he ended up coming in this month. And the way the rules work, the continuing items go to the back of the line, and he's in a very long agenda that we've had today. He sat there and he did a great job there. I appreciate it. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Questions of staff?
I just have one question. From the sign. I couldn't tell from the north side. Is the sign that faces where it says Playhouse, that facing west?
It's a, you know, I'm going to have the applicant speak a little bit more on that, but it's a two-sided, from my understanding, it's a sign that projects out, it's a, it's a sign that faces both ways, so it's going to be facing in either direction. So I'll have Pete speak a little bit more on that specifically.
Any...
You requested that there be a meeting with the neighbors. Did that occur?
Yes, as a matter of fact, he, there was a meeting with the neighbors. And again, I'll let Pete tell you a little bit more about the meeting that he had with the neighborhood.
Are there any other questions of staff? Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like one to sleep.
No, sorry, I had to wait so long.
I've been through this before. I had a feeling. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Pete Zahn, two forty-four South Palmetto, Daytona Beach. Dennis gave a great presentation, probably the only two issues you asked about the sign. It will project, and it will show from two sides. I'm not sure if it's, I believe it's going to project into the, towards the west, so it would show north and south. We did have, you asked about the meeting. We had a neighborhood meeting, we had four people show up. The only items that they asked about was signage. So we thought, well, we better react to that. We added a monument sign in the parkage area at the, would be at the front, which would be east of the, or, excuse me, west of the entry. And then we added a four-by-eight sign on the wall. I have exhibits to show those because I don't think they got into your package.
We'll share.
Thank you.
Mm-mm. No.
It is on the overhead.
Yeah.
So what you're looking at is up on the overhead. The monument sign would be the one on the left, and the wall sign would be on the right. The detail that I gave you shows an outline of the monument sign above. It'd be just a standard, I think there was, we had two feet of clearance and then a four-by-eight sign. The second sheet shows the south elevation of the building. I have highlighted where the sign would be. That would be a backlit sign, and what we envision is perhaps the future schedule so that, the question that came from the neighborhood meeting was, what's coming up? They had a pole sign. It rusted and fell down, so this would replace that. Then the monument sign we could put out in the parking lot, it'll be down low, and it might have more information about the current program that's going on. Those came up. The meeting was Monday before the Thursday planning board meeting, so we didn't have time to get it into the submittal package, but these details were emailed over to Dennis prior to your meeting last month. So I've already got one hour invested in the planning board meeting. Any other questions?
Pete, I have a question. There's this board's Playhouse, is that a sign?
Yes, Daytona Beach Playhouse is the name of the building.
The big thing that goes up and down is the Playhouse.
Yes. That is, actually, that does show on the elevation, doesn't it? Yes. That's the Playhouse sign that was in the rendering that you saw. That, that's the projection sign. So there would be three signs. We added these two. The Playhouse was, is more of an architectural feature of the building. It's not going to change, it's just kind of a historical sign for the building. The other two will have copy that will say what's coming up and what the venues are going to be. They're not going to be electronic. I thought that'd be a neat idea until the last couple of hours.
Okay.
We're not against electronic.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Is there anybody like to speak against? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Zahn. I'll take a motion, please.
I'm just going to say that what a fine addition this has been for so many years in Daytona Beach, and I'm sure all of us have been there and enjoyed productions and what they're doing, and it sounds like you're really making, hesitate to say a comeback, but things are really improving and going forward, and you're making these modifications. That's great.
It's a little hidden, it's a little hidden jewel. Take a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve semi-public use permit, D V two zero one four dash zero three seven, Daytona Playhouse.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zahn.
Let's see. I put it in the folder.
Okay. How about downtown Blue?
Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Area Board met on Tuesday, July first, in Commission Chambers. The meeting was called to order at twelve oh five. We had the usual agenda, roll call by staff, approval of the minutes from June third. We were presented an update on the downtown improvement projects and a brief discussion on some of the items. There were discussions on items that we've watched that have been approved for completion. We've had semi-completion. We were told that some things were completed. Then after the discussion, there were, they actually were not completed. They were completed except two other things, so that took most of the time. But once we received that, there were no public comments, and board comments were limited. We were, we had adjournment at twelve forty-five.
Okay, thank you very much. How about Midtown?
Okay, attended a meeting on August twelfth, Tuesday, August twelfth, at six o'clock. Several agenda items. One of the main things is the B C U residential hall, phase one, phase two. Again, one of the greatest concerns with B C U was the parking, the amount of parking space, especially street parking and so forth, that was a big item to be discussed for a while. We did approve their request. There was another one with M and M auto sales, which was approved. And then we shared some updates about redevelopment projects, which includes Orange Avenue. And if you're coming down over, you know you cannot turn on Orange Avenue now. That's pretty much it. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. How about Main Street?
There was not a Main Street board meeting again this month. Lucky.
I think you're working on that.
Too consecutive.
Thank you very much.
I think there's no business before it. There's nothing to go on the agenda.
Are there any, well, are there any public comments? Actually, we've got public here, so certainly well done. How about staff? Any comments from staff?
Yeah, two things I want to remind everyone about, the public hearing on the Land Development Code, special meeting on the eighteenth. And as we understand it, everyone is going to be able to make it, but Miss Trago, I know she's out of town, but we need everyone to make sure we have a quorum. The consultant's going to be here. I want to invite you to bring your book with you that we sent out so that when it's referred to and discussed, we can kind of follow that discussion. And that's all I have. If anyone has any specific questions or concerns about that, and you want to talk to us beforehand, please feel free to call us. That's all I have.
Are there any other staff comments? How about board?
I've got a question. Now, it's come up before, but we've got a lot of, we have a lot of new members, and when it, like, staff recommends something, and then it says with the following, you know, exceptions, or with the following recommendations above and beyond their recommendation, normally, if you forgot to say, and, and plus staff comments, it was always assumed that staff comments go in with the motion. Is that correct?
You clarified that for me. I remember my first night. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, usually, if you just make the motion, it's assumed it's as presented, and so, you know, as long as it's in that staff report recommendation, it would go along.
Right.
But never any harm in saying as presented, or...
Okay, but if something happened that someone didn't say that...
Then we'd go back and look.
That it's in there.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. And then another thing, I wanted, I've got a question. I know the city charter that they're going to be voting on in November is going to reduce the planning board from eleven members to seven members, if it passes, I guess, or whatever. Now, how will that be, how will members be downsized?
I wasn't in any of the Charter Review Commission discussions about procedures on that, and I haven't heard it discussed, but I know that the intent was to have one per each zone and one for the mayor, so the seven sitting here. Right now, we've got this odd thing with two for all but one district, and I think that was the intent of the seven, but procedure-wise, I haven't heard any discussion.
To get it more in line like the other boards, right?
I think, Larry, when they started evaluating our code and procedures, they were talking about it was unusual for the number that we had. And then when they started seeing how it rotates, that was even more complicated, so we talked, one of their suggestions was to change, and we said, well, it's in the charter, and that may be where that originated, but I haven't heard anything about procedures of how...
I knew it wasn't, just save money on salaries.
No, correct.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I just, I wanted to say that although I won't be able to participate in the public hearing September eighteenth, I will be sending some minor comments. Mostly, my concern is I went through the L D C, we're making sure that we set it up so that we could have redevelopment and redevelopment areas and to look, that's my personal thing, is to make it easier for redevelopment, to minimize non-conforming uses, and if there are carrots that we can put out for those kinds of things, so that we could have that reinvestment. So I just want you to know, that would be the thrust of my comments, and I will be sending them to Mr. Walton, and he'll share them with you. Okay.
That'll be good, and that especially comes into affordable housing, to where we have the smaller lots. And I think we just got that passed about two years ago, because it came from Affordable Housing Board, to where everything is compatible.
Right.
If you've got a fifty-foot lot and, or a thirty-foot lot and no sidewalk, then the other new house doesn't have to have a sidewalk and stuff. So it's moving towards that, but it needs, it needs some more tweaking.
Well, you know, I wasn't really prescribing changes so much as reinforcing and, you know, just applauding.
But it, but it needs change, because, you know, we do have some streets that don't have a sidewalk, but the current Land Development Code, if you build a house there, you'd have to put a sidewalk in, and you would be the only sidewalk on the whole street, which is ridiculous. That's why, you know, that's why we tweak, we tweak the Land Development Code, and that's where one size of the Land Development Code doesn't fit all, and that's where the variances come in.
Right.
And that stuff, so...
Right, right.
I was only going to comment that our chairman spoke to an issue a couple of meetings ago, that individuals or developers will come in and they buy a piece of property. They understand the rules to be built on that property, but invariably, they build what they want, and then they come to us and to the City Commission for these changes. I know I sound like an old grouch, I guess, sometimes, but I really get concerns. Of course, there are exceptions, but we get carried away. What we did tonight, we've opened the door, I'm going to tell you. You're going to see a lot of churches come forward because we've just said, hey, here you go. And I have nothing against churches, don't get me wrong, but...
Might be some Latin out there in Malibu.
Could be, could be.
I'm sorry, glad you're sitting over there.
If we make rules, then we should follow them. I also feel the planning staff could perhaps be a little more forceful when people are coming forward, kind of like what happened to us in Ormond Beach. I mean, really, you can hire an attorney if you want to, but it's not going to go anyplace, you know? And that's a situation where they've adopted some standards, doesn't mean they haven't changed things, but not a lot. And we do a lot of changing here, and I think that needs to be brought forward. I see I've triggered someone, I think he's going to comment, but I understand they have the right to do that, but I think a lot could be cut off at the pass. I'm not aware of...
Absolutely. And we have people who come in and they'll sit across the table from us, and they'll say, and we want an EMC. And I look them dead in the eye, and I say, it's not going to happen. I said, you're entitled to take that application forward, but this is not something that's going to be accepted. My personal opinion, it's not going to, it's not going to be accepted by the planning board and the City Commission, just based on what you're doing. And so I do let these, these people that come in with the applications, but they can always take that application forward. So I try to give them my, my opinion as to whether or not it'll, it'll, it'll get approved or not get approved, but they're entitled to take it forward if, if they feel that that's what they want to do.
So it's really ourselves and the City Commission that's aligning the things to go through.
It's...
But why do we have a planning board? Why do we, you know, just eliminate those and let people come in and just go to City Commission? They're the elect...
And, and so, I do let these, these people that come in with the applications, but they can always take that application forward. So, I, I try to give them my, my opinion as to whether or not it'll, it'll, it'll get approved or not get approved, but they're entitled to take it forward if, if, if they feel that that's what they want to do.
So, it's really ourselves and, and the city commission that's aligning the things to go through.
It's...
But, why do we have a planning board? Why do we, you know, just eliminate those and let people come in and just go to city commission? They're the elected people.
But a lot of times, we have things that say, you know, staff does not recommend approval of this item. And it's where probably that they're, you know, that they put theirself forward when staff says it ain't going to fly. They have to process also to be able to do it.
Right.
And I think when we see staff does not recommend approval, that swings a lot of weight with me.
I've only seen it happen twice.
Really?
Yeah. I, I, you can read in some of the writing and understand some things, but it's actually coming out and saying don't approve. I've seen it twice since I've been...
Well, when they, when they don't approve, and it says that they recommend the planning boards, whatever, you pretty much know it's kind of huge.
I know we have a lot of, a lot of amendments that are coming through with EMCs, where they are requesting the graphics, and they are requesting the multiple colors. You know, there may be movement to, to modify the Land Development Code to, to allow that on, on four EMCs, but that hasn't come down from the city commission yet, so... But I, I know that as these keep coming, there may be a time where they say, okay, now we need to take a look at this, and, and what more can we do for this, this portion of code, so...
I don't know, as, as an idea, because that is happening. Maybe reinstituting that same committee that you had, and reopening the sign issue and going through it again. Another, let's try to get to something which is not such a problem.
And I do know that the city commission is very different...
I don't have to be so cranky then. Everybody looks at me like, what's wrong with you, you know?
The city commission's very different right now than it was, you know, just four years ago, so...
I know that, without a doubt.
And then we're, a lot of things that I think that we see that come before us are pretty much the same nature, and that's why they keep coming and coming and coming, and that's why they're, they're addressing it in the new Land Development Code, that there's a little bit more flexibility because one size doesn't fit all. And so, these are the outer perimeter, and then it doesn't appear that there's so many variances because things have changed.
I never have found that submerged land. I've been going online to do a hunt, as you suggested, and I didn't...
You know, use a snorkel, dude.
You know, I thought, I thought to myself, well, if we started messing with that...
Well, I think Mr. Morris is right, though. I mean, we do have to, you know, that it is, I think it's much easier for everybody if the rules are set and you know that's what they are, and then you work around the rules, rather than doing it the other way, as I think it has been done, as you suggested. So, yeah, I think your point's well made.
And when you make an exception, then there should be trade-offs.
Is there anything else to come from?
The one thing I'd like to say is that I agree with you on the, on the waivers, when we're looking at the intent, and if it's meeting the intent, I'm okay with the waivers, but I think the signs are the ones that bring it up the most. This is okay with eight acres if used for educational, and this one's okay for 35 acres if it's used for retail, and this one's okay for 100 acres.
That's exactly what happens. That's exactly what's going to happen.
It's like, I understand that we want to make the land usable by the owners. We want to make it meet the needs of the public, but is the land not usable because it has 385 square feet instead of 750? So, that's where it just seems like there's an intent to get what they want instead of what is needed, and, and we just have to have better guidelines, and I think better from staff recommendations as to this meets the guidelines or does not? And this would prohibit the use of the property, or it will not?
And then, you know, two, our technology has outrun our Land Development Code, and that's the need for the tweaking and, and the bringing it forward into the future, instead of the current Land Development Code that we're working with that was way back.
I disagree with that as far as the signs are concerned, because we just did that about two and a half years ago, and all of this existed then, and we said, this is what we want. And that's why I think if we need changes, then I think that committee or whatever it is should be set back up and re-review and bring forward, so we've got something clear and clean to go with.
Well, it was a shame with, well, it was a shame with the electronic signs, because we just did that. I mean, that was a very short time ago that we passed that, and already, we're working around it pretty good. Are there any other things to be brought to the board? Thank you all for your patience. This was a long night, lots of issues, and I appreciate your patience.